Yes, everybody come to the table. Thank you all very much. And before Dr. Garza makes some opening comments, I would respectfully like if board members can hold their comments until the end. It is a long present and a wonderful presentation. I've already seen it, so they're great. But if we could hold the questions until the end so that we can get through. Dr. Garza?
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. I will be just very, very brief. But I just wanted to point out that this is one of four major evaluations that have been conducted this year. This one is, there is a lot of information, but I think it's all very, very important. I think it's a report that's very well done. The four topics were selected because they aligned with the strategic identified strategic priorities of the division as outlined in the strategic plan. And of course, quality, early childhood experiences and access to pre-K, et cetera, is has been a long, long stated goal of this, of this board. So I think this report you'll find very informative. But I also think it's very timely because tomorrow will be the Board of Supervisors School Board Retreat. And this is one of the major topics that have been, has been identified for part of that conversation. So I think it's also very timely. So I'd like to turn it over to Marty Smith, who will now set the stage for the full report.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. So as Dr. Garza said, this is the final study that we're bringing to you this year. As a reminder, we brought reading, we've brought ESOL, SRNR, and now our final being pre-K. It's important to note that, that our study focuses on the impact of pre-K on FCPS students over time. We have a lot of data in our early childhood office. And so this is really the first good look that we have at longitudinal data in terms of the impact over time. The other piece that we'll be discussing are costs around our FSEP programs. And we'll also be looking at just the benefit, overall benefit of pre-K, pre-K in relation to our students and also FSEP, which is our own individual program. So at that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sockwell. And we have Leedy Haruda at the table with us today. We also have Maura Burke, who is our content specialist and our director of pre-K and early childhood here in Fairfax County. So at that, Dr. Sockwell.
Thank you. The purpose of this study, of this presentation of the study to the board is, one, and it's already been pointed out that this is for information, so there's no action required. But the purpose has to do with presenting the major findings, the evidence, and the conclusions that we have reached from the study. We also want to talk about some recommendations from the study's findings, as well as some of the best practices in research. And then we ultimately want to address any of your questions that you may have about what we're presenting to you today. By way of introduction or some context, the board will recall that the strategic plan made a commitment to provide quality early childhood experiences to prepare students to enter kindergarten successfully. And so this is an extension of that commitment to take a closer look at some programs. Fairfax actually offers four different programs. There, of course, is FSEP, then there's Bridge to K. There's a special education preschool program, and then there's the home instruction to parents of pre-kindergarten youngsters. And we explained in the report that our focus is mostly on the FSEP program. It really is the, the most comprehensive service that we're providing to income-eligible three and four-year-olds children. And we are supporting through this program their academic, social, emotional, as well as physical development. During the 15-16 school year, there were some 99 classrooms at over 65 sites. And so the FSEP program is going to be the focus. If you're interested in some of the data that we have on Bridge to K, that information is also available in the report. By the way, I want to call your attention to the page numbers in the left corner of each slide. If you want to track where this information is discussed in more detail in the report, you can associate the slide with the information in the report. The study purpose and scope. The purpose of this study was to identify the extent of differences in the academic and behavioral outcomes for students with and without formal pre-K. As Mr. Smith said, we're focusing on outcomes, and that means in terms of the scope, well, actually, we're focused on outcomes and costs, but in terms of the scope, we did not look at the quality of pre-kindergarten experiences or the outcomes that people saw for students as pre-K students. And neither did we track instructional quality over time as we looked at the performance of students. The, the scope piece is important for you to understand because there is a study, we understand, in agreement with the University of Virginia to look at more the quality or implementation issues. And I'm going to say more about that a little later, but it's critical to know that there is another piece coming behind this over time. So I said, we're going to focus first on student outcomes. Student outcomes are the first of the two broad areas, and costs will be discussed after this. But as a way of organizing what we're going to talk about with you, this chart demonstrates or shows you where we're going to go in this presentation. If you look at the first dark green row going across, we're going to talk about achievement or outcomes in different ways. First, we're going to talk about former FSEP students versus matched no-pre-K students. And then I'm going to talk some about the results when we looked at two years versus one year of FSEP. And lastly, Leedy's going to talk about the big picture of former pre-K versus no-pre-K at all. So these are the big areas that we're going to talk about. Now, what are we going to talk about related to these areas? If you look at the column on the left, we're going to be looking at achievement, the need for support services, participation in advanced opportunities, and behaviors and habits that are associated with students in one of these groups versus the other group. I won't read the details of the middle columns, but, or middle rows, but you can see more specifics by each one of those areas that we want to, want to deal with. So former FSEP versus matched students with no formal pre-K. Before I talk about that, I want to give you some contextual or background information that the board has expressed some, some interest in. One issue is, who are these students? Who are we looking at when we talk about FSEP students? If we look at the 2015-16 kindergarteners and track back at which ones were FSEP students, this is what the picture looks like. In 2015 and 16 kindergarteners, about 1,400 of them were former FSEP students. So out of the class entering for 15-16, which was about 13,000, about 1,400 of those students were former FSEP students. Now, the numbers are different here, of course, but what's more striking is the demographics for these students. FSEP students out of the general population look pretty similar in terms of students with disabilities. But as you look at the, the English learner percentage of students, about 72% of the FSEP students were English, English learners. And of course, there's overlap here, so we just won't add up to 100%. But compare that to the 36% in the general population of kindergarteners entering, about twice as many of these students were L students. And then you look at free and reduced lunch. Of course, these students are par FSEP selected based on this. And so they are three times more likely to be free and reduced lunch students than you find in the general population itself. And so you get a sense of who these students are, but you also get some foreshadowing because, as I said, I was, I was going to talk to you about how FSEP versus non-FSEP students compare. The differences in these demographics required us to do some matching of students that I'll, again, talk a little bit more about, to make sure that when we talk about outcomes, we're comparing apples with apples and oranges with oranges. So don't be too concerned about the, the difference in the demographics when we talk about outcomes because we will adjust for that. The board has also been interested in where FSEP student participants come from by pyramid. So while the previous slide showed demographics, this slide shows the geographic location of a former, of former FSEP students in 15-16. This is the, this is the, this is the 15-16 class, but as you can see, when, when this class, when this class is examined for how many of them or where, where the FSEP students actually come from, you can see that FSEP participation is concentrated in the southeastern portion of the county. We're looking at Stewart Falls Church, Annandale, and Lee for the pyramids from where most of the FSEP students or the highest percentage of students in FSEP come from. The reverse of this is, and I need to tell you a little bit about the legend. If you look at the legend, you understand that the darker the shade, the more concentration of FSEP students. The contrast to that is, the lighter the shade, the fewer percentage of FSEP students or participants. And so we do, in fact, have some pyramids that have under 5% of their populations being involved in FSEP. So there's, there's quite a distribution here. Another area of interest for the board has been the waitlist. So now if we step back to 14 and 15 and look at the waitlist, we can see that the waitlist for FSEP, as students moved into kindergarten the next year, you can see the waitlist from where, where these kids come. During 2014-15, FSEP served about 1,700 students. 131 were three-year-olds, and about 1,580 were four-year-olds. If you look at this chart, you can see on the right, the waitlist for the four-year-olds. There are about 262 students on this waitlist. And by the way, the little dots that are going down the middle, the bigger the dot, the greater the concentration of students on the waitlist itself. The actual numbers for these are in the report, and so we're just trying to, we're just trying to give you a visual image of where, where these students are on the waitlist. And of course, you would expect more on the waitlist for the four-year-olds than the three-year-olds. There were about 39 students on the three-year-old waitlist. Again, the largest concentration on this waitlist is also in the southeastern part of the county. So you can see how these sort of overline or in-line up this way. I'm going to show you the same kind of information for the most recent waitlist, and that's for 2015-16. So this is sort of bonus information, and we're not talking about these students in the report, but we thought you might be interested in seeing them. They look pretty similar as, for 2015-16 as they did in the previous year. You can see the waitlist, again, is, is very similar. But it's important to know that the waitlist in relations to the number of students served don't really give you the fullest picture of what the need is. Some of these students on the waitlist may actually be involved in some other kind of program but still waiting to be involved in some Fairfax programs. So it's not an exact match, but it does give you a sense of where the needs are that, or where the needs are highest in the county compared across pyramids. So the first big question that we asked was, to what extent does participation in FSEP benefit students once they enter kindergarten and progress throughout? To answer this question, we did have to match students because you saw that they were, they were different when we pulled students out of the general population to compare to FSEP students. We matched on poverty, LEP level, and special education status to make sure that we were comparing similar kinds of students. This allowed us essentially to isolate the effects of the program itself. So the analysis, this is probably the most difficult thing, I'm going to try to explain. The analysis did not follow FSEP kids throughout their career. Instead, it looked at different grade groups and determined if they had previously been in FSEP. And then we looked at how they performed. So we looked at kindergarteners and asked, were they FSEP versus non-FSEP? And that's how we made that comparison. We looked at third, fifth, eighth, and 12th graders and looked back and said, were they FSEP? If they were, we put them in the FSEP group and compared them to the non-FSEP group. So that's how all of these comparisons play out for you. It's also important for you to know that the way in which we determined what kind of experience students had was using the, the entry form that parents complete when, it's a pre-kindergarten experience form. In our opinion, it's not a very exact form and probably needs some work to be done for us to make these kinds of, do these kinds of analyses. But that was the best source of information we had for figuring out where kids, where kids were before they came to Fairfax. So here's the second most complex thing I am going to have to explain. And if you really like statistics and like reading about measurement, there's a full explanation in the report itself. But we wanted to present this to you graphically. The way in which we're going to talk about differences in outcomes for groups is using a statistic called effect size. And an effect size is nothing more than a statistic that tells you not only are things different, but how large the difference is. What is the magnitude of the difference? You think about a, a car race and a car wins by five seconds, but a car could have won by 10 seconds or 20 seconds. And so when we talk about effect size, it automatically implies that the differences are important and significant, but how big those differences are may be of interest to you because our questions had to do with how different were groups. So if you look at this graphic, if you see us reporting or talking about a difference that's in green, it means that it was in favor, a difference in favor or an advantage for pre-K students. If it were in red, and we didn't have any cases like this, but if it were in red, it meant that it was an advantage for having no pre-K. And of course, right in the middle is a gray bar. So I'm going to show you some gray bars where we simply did not see a difference between one group and the other group. It's important to note, though, any green, whether it's light, medium, or dark, is significant and, and important in research. So again, in research, a difference of point one would be considered small, point three would be medium, and point five would be a large effect. And in research and education, we don't often see large effects. We see small to medium effects over long periods of time having great impacts. That's more typical. So what did we find using this kind of analysis? We found that former FSEP students demonstrated stronger early reading skills upon entering kindergarten than those who had no formal experience. We also found that the reading differences that were observed were evident through the end of grade one. And that former FSEP students had a consistently small advantage in math over time. And the FSEP program participants also had a positive outcome in terms of high school graduation rate. That is, they're, they tended to graduate at a higher rate than those who did not have FSEP. Now, I'm going to, so that's the, those are the findings. Now, I'm going to show you the evidence related to that graphic that I put up. Not going to read all of these, but I will call your attention to the top part of this graph that deals with reading. You can see by the green bar going to the right side that upon entering kindergarten, FSEP students outperformed non-pre-K students. You can see that effect upon entering and by the end of kindergarten. You can also see it by end of grade one. By the end of grade, after the end of grade one, you see the gray bars. That simply means that we did not see differences among these groups. It does not mean that these students no longer continue to learn. They continue to learn, we just didn't see the advantage or the, or the, the additional impact of being in FSEP versus no FSEP. If you look at the bottom part of this chart, you see for mathematics, there was a small effect consistently in favor of FSEP students, grades three, five, and eight. So I want to talk very briefly about something that I don't have a lot of information about. And it is about this diminishing achievement advantage. When we talk to other researchers and comb the national literature, there seems to be a pattern that we have seen that preschool or pre-K comes in with some initial effects, but they tend to level off. And that's probably the best way to describe this. They tend to level off by grades one, two, and sometimes level at, at grade three. We're not sure why. People speculate, and researchers have asked that question. It means, again, that there's a, that the reduction in the differences between those groups no longer exist over a period of time, but that's not the same as saying these students no longer continue to learn. If you could envision, envision what I'm showing is, these students come in ahead of the game, they continue to perform pretty well, but there's an upturn for those students who did not have that kind of experience. Now, possible explanations that we see in the literature could be a focus on the achievement gap. It could be a natural tendency for any students who are not performing as well as other students, for us to focus on those students and try to raise their level of performance. It may also be a challenge for teachers to figure out, how do I maintain this advantage, this higher performance level while also providing instruction for those students who need more to catch up? So there are a variety of explanations, and probably the most important thing for you to know is that when the University of Virginia does its study in the fall, one of its reasons for being funded and being accepted in Fairfax is it's going to help us understand more about what may be going on that might, might explain this phenomenon. In fact, people around the country will probably be waiting for the results from this study because it's, it is a national question. In terms of on-time high school graduation, we have small effects, but positive effects for FSEP students, both using the federal definition as well as the state definition. In terms of support, need for support services, we found that former FSEP students require fewer special education services in elementary and, and middle school. That is the finding. Now, I want to show you the evidence. And this is probably what you would expect, that the need for special education services wouldn't really show up until about grade three. But at grade three, grades five and eight, what the green means on the right side is that the FSEP students actually require fewer special education services than the students who did not have FSEP. We did not see the same kind of pattern of results for ESOL students or for advanced opportunities or behaviors. And so here's where we did see an advantage for FSEP students. Now, as I've been instructed to say, this is a hard reset because I'm getting ready to talk about something a little different. The previous discussion was about FSEP students versus students who had no formal pre-K experience. Now, and they were matched in that way. Now, I'm about to talk about, what difference does it make if students have two years of FSEP versus one year of FSEP? It's probably logical to believe that if a program has an impact, it's going to show up more if, if students have more of a dose of that program than not. And so that was the logic of us crafting this, two years versus one year of exposure to FSEP. We did not match for this. We took the universe of students, all of our students that we could find who previously had two years of FSEP versus those who had one year, we, we used the universe of students to do that. Now, in saying that, I will also point out that these students typically are very similar anyway in terms of poverty, special ed, and language. And so they're relatively, excuse me, similar type students.
I'm sorry, can I just clarify? You're comparing those two groups against each other, not one year of FSEP to the universe of students and two years against the universe of students? You're just comparing them to each other?
We're comparing them to each other. How does one year of FSEP look versus two years of FSEP? So the question that drove this is, again, to what extent does participation in FSEP benefit students once they enter kindergarten and progress through school? Two years of this dose versus one year? Here's what we find. When differences did emerge, they favored students attending FSEP, this FSEP program for two years rather than one year in some specific areas. These students had higher achievement in some grades and greater on-time high school graduation rates. They had much lower needs for ESOL services, and they had greater participation in some advanced opportunities during high school. So that's a finding. Now, I want to show you the evidence behind that finding. In terms of reading, again, we're looking at two years of FSEP being favored on the right side of this graph versus one year of FSEP being on the left side of the graph. You can see from the green in kindergarten entry and end of kindergarten that students who had two years of FSEP outperformed entering and at the end of kindergarten those students who had one year. By end of grade one and two, again, that difference seemed to disappear. They're, they're performing about at the same level. Now, we may have an anomaly at grade five, we don't really know, but we did see, again, at grade five, two-year FSEP students performed higher than one-year FSEP, as indicated by that green at grade five.
And that was this particular cohort, just to be clear?
Yes, probably the cohort. We saw at, and for mathematics, we only saw at grade five, again, an advantage for two years in the program versus one year in the program. So these results are somewhat mixed, but I am showing you when we did see a difference, where the difference surfaced. In terms of high school graduation rate, again, students with two years of FSEP tended to do better than one, with a small effect size. Here's where I think the board ought to be most interested. The strongest difference between one year and two years of FSEP participants came from the analysis of need for ESOL services. I said that we, we don't see too often in education, medium to strong effects. In this case, if you look at kindergarten, starting in kindergarten and looking across in terms of the need for fewer ESOL services, we're into very high effect sizes, which means the differences were very, very strong in favor of two years of FSEP versus one year of FSEP. You see at grade one and grade two, as, as the highest possible differences we could measure. It's also still there for grades three and five, and somewhat at grade 12. We didn't see any advantages for special education services, however. So most of what we saw was in this ESOL area. We also saw some differences for advanced courses in middle and high school. If you look at the two graphs on the right where there's green, students who had FSEP for two years were more likely to take a course beyond Algebra II, and they were more likely to pass three AP or IB courses. Again, we did not see these, these kinds of differences at, at elementary school or the middle school, just at the high school level. So in sum, what I've attempted to explain is, if you look across the dark green area, I talked about former FSEP versus matched no-pre-K, and I talked about two years of FSEP versus one year of FSEP. The differences are in the light green in the cells, the differences for achievement, higher reading until the end of kindergarten or grade one, depending on which one of these you're in. For FSEP versus matched no-pre-K, fewer special education services. But for two years versus one year of FSEP, fewer ESOL services. Participation in advanced opportunities, we only saw higher participation in high school advanced opportunities for the two-year versus the one-year. So again, any place we say no reliable differences, it, it means that either the results were not consistent in a pattern, or we didn't think we had sufficient information to make a case for there actually being a difference. Now, here's another hard reset. I'm going to turn it over to Leedy, who's going to talk about the big picture of, does formal pre-K make a difference? formal pre-K make a difference versus no formal pre-K?
Okay, so, this is another hard reset, and this is quite different from what Ricardo was just talking about. We're going to be talking about the universe of students, so well over 10,000 of our kindergarteners each year, who were either in pre-K, some kind of pre-K experience outside the home, or not in pre-K. Now, we get this information off of this pre-K experience form, and Ricardo mentioned that it isn't necessarily the best information because we think parents may have some difficulty filling this out, but it is the information that we have. And we tried to use the parts of it and use it in a way that we thought would collapse the information as reliably as possible. And you can see on this slide, the kinds of responses that parents were, would have chosen to be grouped into the pre-K experience group, which was about 75% of our incoming kindergarteners this year, or the no pre-K group, which was about 11% of our kindergarteners this year. Now, one of the things we did do is because we always know who our FSEP students are, is we included all of our FSEP students as part of the pre-K group because we can easily identify them regardless of how parents answered the form. This information also because we cannot track these students without the form information, we were only able to track them through fifth grade because before that, there was no form that we could use. So we're tracking them not quite as far as we were able to track our FSEP students. Here's some demographic information about them, and you can see that the students who were in formal pre-K and those who did not have any kind of formal pre-K experience are quite different from each other. The majority of students who were students with disabilities had some sort of formal pre-K experience, and this is probably reflective of our child find in the county that's able to find most of our students and give them some sort of formal pre-kindergarten experience before they come into kindergarten. In contrast to that, the students who are no, did not have a formal pre-K experience, they are largely English learners, about 67% of them were English learners, and about 60% of them were living in poverty. So they have much higher rates of living in poverty or being, having to learn how to speak English. And the other thing to note about this as we go through it is the formal pre-K group, about two-thirds of those students were attending some sort of private provider where they were paying tuition or the family was paying tuition for them to participate. Here's a similar map to what Ricardo had shown you previously. It shows the county and the different pyramids, but rather than showing FSEP participation, this shows the concentration of pyramids where there's no formal pre-K for students who have come into kindergarten. So we have at the very highest end in Mount Vernon, about 26 to 30% of the incoming kindergarten class had had no formal pre-K experience, and then it goes down from there. Several, several of our other pyramids such as Falls Church, Herndon, Stewart Lee, and Edison also have relatively high rates, above 15% of students that have had no pre-K experience before coming to kindergarten. So the question that we asked here was similar to what we had asked about FSEP, but we're talking now about formal pre-K versus no formal pre-K. To what extent do students with and without formal pre-kindergarten experience differ once they enter kindergarten and progress through school? No, I'm sorry. And one thing we should note about this, when we talked about the demographic differences, we didn't do matching here because we really wanted to deal with the universe of students and include as many of them in our analyses as possible. So rather than do a matching where we would have to discard most of our formal pre-K students, we did, we did statistical controls instead. So this was a different approach than the one that had been used with FSEP, but it allowed us to keep as many of the students in the analyses as possible. So in terms of the findings, for achievement, we have two findings here. Reading achievement advantage for students with formal pre-K was highest upon kindergarten entry and continued through the end of grade two. And then students with formal pre-K also demonstrated higher math performance at one grade, but not at the other. So here's the evidence for that, and you can see similarly to what Ricardo presented about FSEP students, at kindergarten entry, these students come in with higher performance, and here it is a medium advantage that they show coming in when they have had formal pre-K. You see that advantage continued through the end of kindergarten, although it's small at that point, and it continues to be small through the end of grade one and the, the end of grade two. So again, you see that same pattern of coming in with an advantage and having it continue for a couple of years, but then it does diminish again. So similarly, it's not just our FSEP students who are having that diminishing pattern, but it's actually true for all of our students who have had formal pre-kindergarten coming in. And then for math, we saw it at third grade, but we did not see it at fifth grade. In terms of need for support services, what we found was that throughout elementary schools, students who had attended formal pre-kindergarten required fewer ESOL services than those who had not had that opportunity. And for special ed, we did not see any kinds of differences. So here's this, here's the evidence for the ESOL services, and you'll see that there's a large difference coming in for kindergarten in grade one, grade two, and grade three. So there's a large difference throughout, and then by grade five, it's dropping off to be small, and that's probably somewhat related to how long it takes our students to learn how to become proficient in English, but you still see that advantage even six years after they started school. For advanced opportunities, we found that students who participated in formal pre-kindergarten experiences received more advanced academic opportunities than students without formal pre-K. And the evidence here is that we found both for advanced math as well as for AAP eligibility when we checked at third grade and fifth grade, there was a small advantage, but a meaningful advantage for students who had participated in pre-kindergarten. So to sum up, we did not find any kind of reliable differences in behaviors and habits, and that's in that third column at the bottom, but you see the same higher reading until grade two in this case. That's the same pattern that we saw with FSEP students. You see a lower need or fewer ESOL services that are needed by these students who had attended pre-kindergarten, and you also find higher participation in elementary school advanced opportunities. So now I'm going to move on to costs. So this is the second big outcome that we looked at. We had looked at student outcomes, and now we're moving on to costs, and we looked at three specific things about costs. The first was just how much the program costs and the funding for it, and then lastly, we looked on return on investment. And here, we're looking specifically at FSEP costs, so the things that are being paid for by the school division or that our students are participating in. So we're not looking across the board at pre-kindergarten experiences, but specifically FSEP costs. So the first question around costs was what program costs and funding sources are associated with FSEP? And the finding is that the total direct cost to operate the FSEP Head Start program is $22.8 million in fiscal year 2016, and FCPS pays approximately $9.7 million, which is about 42% of the overall costs. And the rest of the funding comes from the county, state, and federal governments. And here's the evidence which shows a breakdown of all the different funding sources. The rows that are highlighted in purple are those that are paid for by FCPS. So you see the VPI match, which is about $8 million, a Head Start supplement that we add in for almost a million, and then about $800,000 from project momentum funds. Now, one of the things that I should make sure to explain is that right below where it says FCPS's VPI match of $8 million, you'll see that the state has a line where they put in about $4 million. And just to explain why there's that difference, the $4 million, we match the $4 million, but we have to match more than that in order to allow our students to attend FSEP because the cost of our program is about $13,000, while the cost that the state is using when they're giving us, giving us funding to match is only about $6,000. So that's why we're having to put in about 8,000, I mean, 8 million in order to match the funds. The second question we asked was, to what extent is our approach or FCPS's approach to funding pre-K programs similar to that of other jurisdictions? So, we took a look and we found that FCPS is actually unique in the sense that we braid our funding sources to provide a unified preschool program, and it's unlike a lot of other school divisions that administer a variety of different types of classrooms. And you'll see up here, the 99 classrooms that Ricardo had mentioned earlier here in FCPS, and all of those are braided, meaning the funds for Head Start and VPI and all the other things that you saw at that list are joined together, together to provide a unified program for students. In contrast, counties like Prince William or Chesterfield, you'll see that they divide up their classrooms where they have a specific classroom that is aligned with the, the funding source. So they'll have a Head Start classroom or a VPI classroom, and those kinds of funding sources will be specific to the classroom and they will be aligned with exactly what is needed to do for that program. So braiding is actually considered to be the pinnacle of how you do this in the sense that it provides the highest standard, so you have to meet all the standards. You have to meet Head Start standards, VPI standards, any other standards in every one of the classrooms, and it also provides the most consistent experience for our students because some of these programs like Head Start may provide certain services that VPI might not, and this way, all of our students coming out of FSEP have had the exact same experience and the exact same supports as they went through the program. Another finding related to funding is that we are similar to many school divisions in Virginia in the sense that we're unable to ta, take full advantage of our state preschool funding. And you'll hear, see here some of the evidence. While we are able to match and accept about 60% of the state funds, or 60% of the state slots to fund our program, we leave about 40%, and that was about 1,100 recently, out on the table that we're unable to fund. So the state is giving us a certain amount, and because we have to raise the overall funds that are provided for each slot to 13,000, we're not using about 1,100 of those slots that would be available to us if we could fund all of them. Now, we do rank second behind Prince William, which actually leaves a slightly larger number, but we're the two largest, we're the two counties that leave the largest number of seats out on the table that the state is willing to fund. The final cost piece that we looked at was around the return on investment, and in this context, in the, in this study, we looked at return on investment in terms of cost avoidance. So we, we looked specifically about whether or not in putting in funds for FSEP, would you reduce the likelihood that future funds would need to be spent on other services? And here in particular, we're looking at special ed services and ESOL services. And the finding was that the FSEP program contributes to a significant cost avoidance for FCPS. It, we computed it to 6.4 million, and that's from that decreased need of special ed and ESOL. And there's also additional cost avoidances that are of potential monetary savings from things like reading intervention or on-time high school graduation that we didn't monetize for the study. We only monetize things for this study that FCPS has already monetized, such as the cost of special ed and ESOL. Now, how did we go about computing that 6.4 million? First, we found that FSEP students, participants require fewer costly services. Ricardo talked before about how our students who are in FSEP need fewer special ed services than students who had not attended, and then also students who had been in the program for two years needed fewer ESOL services than those who had been in it for one year. So those things relate into cost savings, and I'll show you on this slide in the graphic, the orange or the red line is what our current kindergarteners, as we projected using the data from the study, what we project they would need in terms of special ed as they move on from kindergarten all the way through grade 12. And you'll see that with FSEP, the projection is this orange line with the number of students here, so right around third grade, which was the place that Ricardo showed you that there was a small advantage starting. You see a separation of the line and a lower rate or number of students requiring special ed. The gray line over here that goes up higher is what we project would happen without FSEP. So you, the gap in between those two is where the cost savings would come into play. And what we did was we estimated the future costs avoided by having those fewer students needing services in kindergarten through grade 12, and then we compared that estimate of the costs avoided to what FCPS puts in in terms of FSEP funding. So what we found was that for a typical FSEP cohort, FCPS avoids a potential cost for student services of 6.4 million, and that breaks out into special education costs of 5.6 million, which represents approximately 58% of FCPS's total FSEP program costs. So what we're putting in, it's about 58% of that cost. And in addition to that, the, it looks to avoid ESOL costs of .8 million among those two-year participants, which represents approximately 94% of our cost for adding that extra year of FSEP for students. In other words, having them start at age three rather than age four. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ricardo, who will talk about conclusions and recommendations.
And was it, was it clear that that cost avoidance was over the lifetime of a cohort, not annually? Okay, just make sure we're clear about that. So what, one might be conclude from the information that you have been presented. One, participation in FSEP provides achievement advantages over not participating, and so there is a real reason to have or to fund the FSEP program. Particularly for two years versus one year, when there are opportunities for funding for two years versus one, our information suggests that there are better outcomes for students. And that students who come having attended some kind of pre-K, having some kind of pre-K experience usually perform better than those students who've had no formal pre-K. So whether it's FSEP, two years of FSEP, or some type of pre-K, students tend to have an advantage in their academic performance. This diminishing achievement advantage over time among students with formal pre-K experiences tend to, tends to mirror what we are seeing nationally, and so I think we all ought to be concerned, but it is probably going to be the pursuit of an additional study for the division. The additional academic-related benefits of formal pre-Ks such as FSEP include reduced need for support services, special education, or ESOL, and increased participation in some of the advanced academic opportunities. Leedy talked about the cost avoidance, where we really see a, a, a strong benefit for FSEP in terms of cost, cost avoidances over the life of a, of a cohort of students. However, our, the division's ability to expand the number of students being served is somewhat limited by the state's current funding structures. And lastly, the, the division's understanding of pre-K experiences of all of its students is limited by the way in which the information is gathered on the registration process. Let me just say something about that. They didn't design this form for us to engage in a study. It served its purpose for what they were using it for. We're simply saying when we try to also use it to do this kind of study, to be very precise in identifying students, it, it needs, it needs some additional kind of edits to it that would allow this kind of investigation. So what would we recommend based on this information? We would recommend to the superintendent to continue to provide FSEP as a two-year experience as recommended by current federal law for funding, and continue efforts to de- and continue efforts to de- to decrease the four and five, I'm sorry, the four and three-year-old waitlist to meet more the needs of Fairfax County preschoolers. And then lastly, continue collaborative efforts with the county to expand access to preschool services for all eligible children in the county. For the school board, similarly, we would recommend support the reduction of, on the waitlist for the three and four-year-old children eligible for FSEP through, one, advocacy to the state for some kind of modification in this funding procedures. We understand that this is an ongoing discussion with the state, but it's probably one worth continuing so that we have greater access to the VIP funding. And then inclusion, inclusion of local funds for the expansion of FSEP in future budget, uh, budgets seem to be, seem to merit the, the kinds of results that we have just presented. That's our presentation.
Thank you very, very much, and thank you, board members, for holding back. Okay, on the list so far, we have in order Ms. Schultz, Ms. Evans. Okay, Ms. Evans, Ms. Hines, Ms. Palchak, Mr. Moon, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Erin at COFAX, Ms. Corbett Sanders. If I missed anybody yet, obviously more hands can go up. So we have so far. Ms. Schultz.
Okay, so I thought that I was going to be lifted on a celestial cloud and taken to heaven, seeing that heat map. Can we go to the heat map, please?
BSEP one?
The, the, no, the heat map for the wait, the waiting. It's all the way back at the beginning. So, um, let me just, um, say to my colleagues um, who have maybe gotten weary over the years of hearing me talk about data versus meaningful data. The data versus meaningful data is made somewhat prescient in this, um, slide. Ten and eleven. One more. You almost said that, that, actually, the first ten would be better. Um, only ten because I say you selected a color for the outline on this slide for the dots. And now on the second one, this is better because it differentiates the dots. I would say that while I understand the numbers in correlation to what they mean, I, I don't, I think that having, um, a, a tag to them that represents their impact, because the one to fourteen actually doesn't mean anything. And the one to four doesn't actually mean anything unless you mean that that's actually a number of students.
Number of students on the waitlist at that site.
Okay, so it is. So it is. So.
My apologies, I should have made that clear.
So, yeah, so that part was a little bit unclear. What this does is it allows us to see that the three-year-olds, um, potentially do have a correlation to the four-year-olds, but not that much, which I find interesting. Like the, um, and it may just be because we don't know about the three-year-olds until they're into our system. Whether this has been somewhat steady over time, because it's hard to tell. Now, can we go to slide eleven? I mean, you sort of have to, instead of having them next to each other, you sort of have to remember. But it's roughly the same. So we know from a geographical location where the problem is resident. So the question I have, the first question I have, in correlation from that to the end of the presentation where you say that we're funding, um, at about thirteen thousand a student and we're only getting six from the state? If, what?
At three.
Right, right. So we're only getting the half of, half the cost of what the state calculates. The cost for us is thirteen, the state's calculating six. Okay, I, I thought I was clear. So if the state's only calculating that it's six, what's, is that six for every jurisdiction? Or have they calculated six just for us? Like, is it a separate calculation just for Fairfax? Or just for our type of jurisdiction? Or is that a normalized cost across the Commonwealth?
It is a normalized cost across the Commonwealth. So it's six thousand and they do it regardless of where it is. The state does have VPI plus funding that it gives to certain jurisdictions that may not be able to access as many of their, um, slots. And we are one of the state, we are one of the counties that gets the VPI plus funding that in some ways compensates for it. But it is, um, in terms of VPI funding, a flat six thousand across the state.
So I just want to, I, I just want to have clarity. If, if the state were able to calculate at half of the actual or approximate there too, instead of getting three thousand per student, we'd be getting six and a half thousand per student. So this, this is where, um, again, to correlate this to some of the, um, bandwagon music I've played for many years. When we come to our legislative package, to me, this becomes a focal point to say, you cannot treat this jurisdiction, um, the same way that you treat, you know, Beaufort County or, you know, Chesapeake or someplace else, because it simply doesn't cost the same. And frankly, if they're giving them half of six thousand, it probably costs them four. They're probably making money on the deal. Now, I'm not, you know, that's tongue-in-cheek, but it is not, it is not commensurate that we're recouping, um, you know, such a small fraction, because that's about, what, twenty-two percent instead of fifty percent? So, I mean, we're losing a lot. So, um, I, I would ask that we make note of this and that we push in particular, um, our state legislators to talk about the differential that exists here. And it's magnified by the fact that we have such a large waiting list. So, but, that comes to my second question, which is, even if, let's just say, in our wildest dreams, the state turned over thirteen thousand, they decided to fund the whole thing, do we even have a place to put the kids? Thirteen thousand per kid. Everybody stop correcting me. I'm okay. I know what I'm talking about. So construct, could, I mean, what do we do about the capital infrastructure? Even if somebody handed you all the money that says it's the full funding per kid, what would you even do? Do you have the correlation of the available seats of the elementary schools that are proximate? Because the next map is the schools that are proximate to there and their, where they are on building utilization. Empty seats. That's, that's really the one I'm waiting for on the CIP. Um, okay, so that's a very interesting question, is even if we push for the funding, do you have the capital infrastructure that correlates to that so that you could start to wane down that, that waiting list? What if you could cut it in half? Well, if you are given the money to cut it in half and you don't have the place to put them, it doesn't do us any good. So that's the, the Paul Harvey other, you know, rest of the story. Um, the second question I have is, um, or it's probably the third question. At the, um, at the end where you have the FCPS cost, the nine point six million, which is like slide forty-four, I think. So, as we're going there, I'll, I'll lead in. Um, you had said that the return on investment was in the, like, fifty-five percent. And I'm trying to, to understand when you get to the ninety-four percent on the ESOL, when you add in the, um, the ESOL makeup of the two-year students. That's six point four million, and if the whole cost is almost nine, is like nine point seven, how do you get to ninety-four percent? In terms of recruitment. Like, go, like, two slides, um, I'm sorry, the slide before, forty-three, forty-three. Going the wrong way. Well, yeah, but you gotta, you, you have to go to forty-three. They're separated, so, there you go. So if FCPS costs are basically nine point seven, how on six point four are you saying we're recouping ninety-four percent of the costs?
For the top one, we're talking about something that's roughly nine point seven million because it's what it costs to send students through as four-year-olds. The bottom one for the ESOL services is related to what we currently fund for about a hundred, a hundred thirty or so students um, for that second year of extra FSEP, so starting as three-year-olds. And that's about nine hundred thousand. So of the nine hundred thousand, you're recouping about ni- ninety-four percent of it with the point eight million.
I, I think I, I'm following what you're saying. That's not what this slide says. So this slide says, because you say for the student services of six point four million, you're saying the ESOL costs represent approximately ninety-four percent of FCPS's costs of providing FSEP to students for an additional year. That, your, I, I, I think there's something else that's missing here, that's maybe another table, because you, you're still saying that the FSEP costs for FCPS are nine point seven. There's not, there's not that in-between, unless I don't see it. I mean, I get what you're saying, but there's like a, that was like a pretty big, you know, leap. And the, the, the last point I would like to make is I believe that there was a study that came out from, um, it may have been the U.S. Department of Education, um, like, two years ago, where we talked about, where it talked about the long-term implications of, um, the access to FSEP. And it looks like your results, I'd have to go back and read it, are very close to, in, in terms of mimicking, that there is a waning, you know, um, a, a waning benefit. Um, it was interesting, was there any reason you thought that maybe potentially there's a higher, um, uh, impact for math? Is that because it's a numeracy versus, um, a language-based issue, which is the reading? And because of, we have such a high ESOL population, so that that impacted like the long-term benefits more, um, or less in reading than it did actually in numbers?
Mrs. Schultz, we have debated that in our office. We're not sure what that is. So we really are counting on some follow-up analyses from the University of Virginia, because we've looked at that every day and we can't explain that pattern. We really cannot.
I, I, I mean, you know, I, I would posit logically that it may be a, a language-based issue, um, but I don't know. And, and, I mean, I, I'm very thankful. This has probably been one of the most comprehensive in terms of providing us analytics and hope, giving us time. The question is whether we're going to take the time to look at this and talk about what this means from a policy perspective. I mean, I hope that we do, but, um, this is incredibly helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Next, we have Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I want to thank you for really an excellent and very thorough report. Very, very well done. Uh, I did want to address the issue of the diminishing returns, which it keeps, uh, coming back. And I, I know it stumps some people, but here's what I, my bottom line from, from this excellent work that you've done. You look at slide eighteen and slide twenty-five. It talks about how those that didn't get FSEP need more intensive special education services, need more intensive, um, ESOL services. So for me, the way I'm reading this is that what we're looking at is that for those that didn't get FSEP, they simply need more intensive services K through three to have them, um, at the same place where the FSEP students are. I'm not sure, this may be very, very difficult to measure. Uh, and this may be the problem that we're seeing, be- because there certainly is a cost. There's a cost to teacher time, a cost to teacher effort. Um, a, a cost, if you look at the entire classroom, you would say, if you've got students here who are very well-prepared, then a teacher can spend more time with his or with all of the students as opposed to needing to spend more time with, um, being very intense and with, with, um, individual students. So I guess that's, that's how I'm reading this, that really it's a pay me now or pay me later kind of a thing. And I guess I'd like to get your feedback on, on whether that may be really what we're seeing when we talk about diminishing returns. What we're really seeing is far more intensive services being required K through three for those that didn't get FSEP. So that's my first question for you.
Well, I, I'll let you speak next, Lady, but we're in, we're in mu- very much agreement with what you just concluded. And when you look at the research and literature, I mean, they're very clear about how you need to pay attention to not just the academic benefits, but these pieces around needs for additional services, because they do ultimately play a role in how well teachers can deal with a whole classroom of students with need.
Exactly.
So the literature is very clear that even when they are seeing that fade with achievement, pay, pay close attention to this issue of need for other additional services.
So I don't know if there's any way to truly quantify that. Maybe there is. And maybe with the study that you're doing with UVA, you could quantify that, because I think that's an important piece of this. You know, what, what, we do pay something, and we pay something, um, in, in the, in the need for more time and more intensive services. So with, um, the stunning, uh, information about the, the need for ESOL services, uh, those differences. And I, I, I wonder, does that, um, suggest that we should be further prioritizing, uh, putting higher on the list those three-year-olds? I mean, maybe we already do this, so, so that's my question. Do we already put at the very top of the list those that need English language services? Um, or is poverty a higher measure? I'm just thinking, because there's such a huge difference with the English language learners, do, does that suggest we need to, um, make that the highest priority?
Really good question. Currently, the, um, initial, um, process is around income. So all of our grants require that families are at or above, I mean, at or below the, um, a two-thousand, um, federal poverty level. So they, so everyone's living in poverty free or reduced lunch, um, meals is a good example. So they, they would qualify for that. And then from that, uh, children receive, their application receives points depending on their specific risk factors.
And language is one of those?
Language is not one of them.
Language is not one of them?
No, it's not, because different grants have different requirements. It happens because of our population that, um, often language, uh, those children come into our program, but it isn't. Usually the, um, typical are, because of our, our VPI grant is about four-year-olds. So your age is a big factor. So if you are a four-year-old, you obviously get more priority because more slots are funded for four-year-olds than they are for three-year-olds. Other factors include, um, uh, maternal, um, education.
Okay.
Um, if you're in, uh, homeless, foster care, uh, pieces like that, military. So, uh, depending, I can get you the whole, um, list of points. And there's different, um, amounts, uh, that go with each of those criteria.
I can see the reason for all of those, obviously, but, um, how could we change that to, to make language be, um, uh, one of the, the factors? Do we have any control over that?
Um, we have a little control, particularly on the VPI, but, um, that would have to be in conjunction with our county partners where that criteria is, um, a universal criteria we use across the county.
I would say, based on what you've shown us here, that is something we definitely should bring up. And FSEP, do we have more control? Because as I understand it, it's more of our program?
The state allows us to create, um, some criteria for risk. The state allows us to create some criteria for risk factors. Income is still the basis for everything, but beyond that, we, we have a little bit of control around that. But you do have to remember, the ESOL data is about that second year, and VPI only is one year, those four-year-olds.
Okay, well, I would love to pursue that, because, you know, you, you have some clear data here. The Bridge to K program, apparently, we're not seeing any impact from that. How much do we spend on Bridge to K?
For this study and the things that we looked at in terms of the kinds of, we were only able to use extent data, so things that already exist in the school system. And we're not sure that the kinds of measures that are available were the best ones to measure the kinds of things that Bridge to K tries to target. So we wouldn't necessarily expect students in the three weeks that they're in full day K, I mean, sorry, in Bridge to K, to necessarily gain a lot of academic skills, and yet, most of our measures are academic measures. We did look at some reports in terms of working habits for, off of the report card, but that may not be sensitive enough to pick up some of those things. So in the measures that we looked at, we did not find it. But we also didn't feel that we necessarily had the best measures to look at it. I know that the researcher who's been working with us, and Maura can probably speak to this a little bit more, has looked at other measures that are more tailored to what Bridge to K is really trying to accomplish, and has found some outcomes for that. So, Maura, I don't know if you have more that you want to say about that?
I can speak in generalities, I, I can get you the specifics about the impact it's having. And what we are seeing is gains in their self-regulation from six to twelve months, and we see that sustained into the first quarter of their kindergarten year. We are also seeing some academic benefits in reading and mathematics, but there's also a translator with a psychologist when that assessment is done. And we do not have a translator when we do the DRA two-word analysis, it's done in English. So there is a little bit of a difference there in that comparison. The, the other piece is, it's children that have not had any preschool experience, and it's only three weeks.
And, but I was surprised by that finding, frankly, that, that we didn't find any, any impact at all. So I, it, it's something to assess in the future, you know, what, and do we have a, an amount of budget for that? Do we know offhand? If, if not, you can get that to me. Just wondering if there's more bang for the buck somewhere else? I mean, I, I know you look at that all the time. But just two more quick questions. With the behavior habits, tell me if I'm wrong, I thought some of, of the nation, the national longitudinal studies did show long-term benefits for behavior. So what we're finding is, is different than some of those longer-term? I mean, the national figures, do, do we have a, a reason for that? Why, why we're seeing that at the national level? And at least at this point, we're not seeing it here.
Yes, you're absolutely right. At the national level, there have been some behavioral or habit kinds of things that have been found to be influenced by preschool. Again, we're not positive we have the best measures. I can tell you that our attendance was a little bit higher for our students, but it wasn't any kind of advantage that translated into an effect size, which was what we were reporting. So we do see a little bit of a benefit from attendance, but it wasn't enough to really give it any kind of advantage, that we would have said, yes, it's an advantage. The progress report ratings, we're just not sure if it's sensitive enough. It may be, it may not be. And then the other measure that we used was VDOE-reported offenses, which is really kind of the extreme level of, you know, the most egregious offenses. So again, that may also be a sensitivity issue, and we may not, just not have exactly the best data to look at some of the same kinds of things that they found out there in the national research.
Well, graduation rates is, is one that I think the, the national figures have shown some impact. But of course, our graduation rates for all of the categories were very high. So that may be, that may have an impact, too, that it's so high overall, that maybe you don't see the difference. So then the last thing, it's a technical question. I was looking for the waitlist by, by, by location, and I just didn't, I didn't find it in Appendix G. So if somebody could, could tell me where to, where to find that, that waitlist, I would appreciate it.
Yes, it's not in there, but we could get it to you. It's, it's not included in the report, it's only at the pyramid level, I believe. But we can get you the specifics on it.
Okay, great, I would love to see that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Evans.
Can I, can I chime in one more thing on the waitlist? The other piece about the waitlist is, because we are primarily funded for four-year-olds, the three-year-old waitlist is never going to be high, because we stopped taking those applications, just so you know that, so.
I think before I take, Ms. Evans, if you could explain again, the, the technicality of the waitlist, so that people understand, on the one hand, if we expect there to never be a waitlist, that won't work. So just very quickly.
We are required under, specifically the Head Start Grant, but all the grants encourage it, that we maintain a waitlist, because we do not want a, a slot to go unfilled for more than thirty days. So we maintain a waitlist, so that any child who moves to a different area or outside of Fairfax County, we can quickly fill that spot with a, a child or family in need. So we are required to do that, so that we are actually using the funding to support children and their families.
So we must maintain an active waitlist. Exactly, so this is a different requirement than doing a study of how many families below the poverty level live in each neighborhood, it's a very different deal. Okay, Ms. Hines.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. This is so much great information, and I think it starts us answering some questions that we've had, so, wonderful. I, I feel like there are a lot of follow-up questions that could happen, but I remember last time you all were here and gave us your report, we gave you two years' worth of more work to do. So I don't want us to do that to you today. But some of my follow-up questions, I suppose, may be answered by the UVA study. So, I mean, one of them is, kind of, I think Ms. Evans may have hit upon it, how do we reconcile what we're seeing and what a lot of school divisions are seeing, when you look at it this way, with some of the longer-term research that has done, which shows over time, such a great return on investment? You know, a dollar spent in early education returns seven to fourteen dollars later over the life of that child, measuring different things in different ways. But, so I'm just wondering, if you want to speak to that now, or if that's something that maybe the UVA study could help us understand, is that? And then also, just to, if there would be a way, and I didn't see it in the report, but maybe I missed it, for us to get a look at what that UVA study is going to be? If there's a summary of the questions that will be asked and the scope of it? That would just be interesting for me, so that's my only question.
Well, in response to tracking over time, the impact, the way we shaped this study was look, listening to the conversations, but also looking in the research. And as you can imagine, there's so many variables in the research, that we made some decisions, but they don't necessarily reflect what Fairfax might want to look at over time. And so I think part of what we could do is to decide, if we want to track outcomes for these students, just decide what's most important to this school division. If you look at Perry School and some of the other Frank Portigram Child Development Studies, they're telling you how many of these kids end up in prison, or how many make more money. So there's so many variables, but if we, if we as a division could say, these are the ones of greatest interest to us, then we could, we could make sure we have a database to sort of track and, and answer those questions over time. So I think it starts with that, because there's just so many variables in the literature, that it's, it's pick and choose. I don't know the details about the study that UVA is gonna do. I don't, Maura, I don't think they've developed questions yet, have they?
They have, so it's a, an umbrella study that has three studies that will happen underneath. And I, we have been in discussion with Dr. Duran and Dr. Presidio about having an opportunity where they could present to you with more specifics about that. But they will be following children from pre-K through second grade, and then kindergarteners through third grade. And specifically, they'll be looking at student outcomes like the OPE study did. But the other piece that Ricardo and Lydia alluded to is they'll also be looking at best practice that is happening in classrooms. So that will be a piece that would also be closely looked at. I think the other piece that is important to pay attention to, as Ricardo referred to, is that, and Ms. Evans referred to, is that in our program, we really do take a holistic approach, so we're not just looking at the academic piece. We are providing mental health services, health services, and nutritional services. And once they leave our program, there's potential for that to be lost for families and for kids. So depending on the services that they're connected to or sustained in the community may or may not impact the outcomes for them.
And I will just add that I have asked the UVA group to come, and they will be willing to, whenever you want to schedule, to do a pre-discussion in terms of what they're gonna be looking for. And then they were willing to come back at least once a, a year, until it's over, to give you the findings. So they are, they hadn't built that in, but they now have built that into their work, so we'll work with the chairman on that.
So thank you. Ms. Strauss, then, could we put that as a next step, that the chair would try to schedule those for the board?
Sure, that's, we're trying to keep track of what we hear as next steps, okay. Thank you. As Ms. Palchak fixes our notes, okay, you're up next.
Thank you. Some of my questions have been answered. I guess just to clarify for us, and for the audience, when we look at the direct costs, you may have said this, what exactly does that include, our total direct costs? Yeah?
Thing is that it is the cost around the grant, so the, the cost to the grant. So that's the health, mental health, nutrition, educational components, and family service components. It doesn't include, I, let's speak this, it doesn't include the, the general FCPS costs like HR and, and thing, is that correct?
Yes, it doesn't, it doesn't include like facilities or HR, any of those kind of typical things that are added in as indirect costs for all students. But it, that is probably another five hundred dollars on top of the direct costs.
And does it include, or do you see an effect for professional development for our edu, pre-K educators? It does include that? It does, okay, perfect, thank you. I don't know if this has come out, but is there a difference in the program, looking at infrastructure, whether the students are based at a school, at their school, not at a school? Is that something that we've looked at, or can talk to, or whether it's a learning cottage versus classroom?
Yeah, our study did not look at that. I don't know, Maura, if you have anything else?
Never looked.
They're at their base school, or whether they go to a, a more of a hub versus the actual location in the school? No, we've never, we've never looked at that.
So there's one possibility for UVA study, do you think, or that's kind of out of their realm?
I, I believe that is probably out of their realm, but we could ask them if that is a variable they could consider.
Okay. And then finally, you kind of addressed this, sort of looking at the holistic. I know we don't just provide the academic, but there's parent leadership, which we've seen. There's the whole kind of community school portion to it, which also, I think, as you alluded to, makes it so tricky to look at the impact specifically. And Maura, I know you've been looking at possibilities for expanding funding, the social impact funds, and deteriorated payments, and it seems pretty inconclusive out there as to where people stand on, you know, is this the best way forward? What is the future impact if we have a social impact fund, could it go away? I don't know if you have an update, or if you'll be providing one to us?
We don't, we're still in discussion with the county around the, the social impact bonds or grants, that, that's still happening at the county level with us.
And are we looking at other options, like tiered payments, or? Do we have a timeframe? Okay, okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Palchak, Mr. Moon?
Thank you for the presentation and the wealth of information. I look forward to a continued, in a conversation with, on this, with the county side tomorrow. Just two, three questions I have. First one has to do with the demographic information on formal FSEP versus no pre-K. I think I do have a demographic information for FSEP participants, but you think for no pre-K, when you're comparing, no pre-K, do you have a demographic information of those no pre-K? I'm trying to see whether, you know, how close that is to formal FSEP, whether it's very comparable or different.
Okay, so for these analyses, we specifically matched, so it is very comparable. But for no formal pre-K generally, that's in the later section that I talked about. So if you're looking for, across the board at all, no formal pre-K students, that's on slide thirty, and it is not as comparable. But we made sure that when we were comparing the FSEP to the no, to the matched group, that that matching made them very comparable to each other.
Okay, thank you, thank you, that's good information to have. On cost avoidance, nine point seven million dollars we have to, you know, we need to put in versus avoidance of six point four million dollars. So difference is about thirty point three, I, I get that. And that does not include a cost avoidance for providing, for the reading intervention and on-time graduation. I just, I want to ask a question about on-time graduation rate. I see that on that, what do you call that on the chart? That, that impact? Effect size?
Effect size.
Effect size, it's, it's a small impact, small effect, or slight effect, little effect? Is, is that, in terms of percentage-wise, on the graduation rate, can you quantify that? Or is, you are unable to do that?
Yes, we, the numbers are in the report, but I have them in here, so.
Okay, whether it's two percent, three percent, ten percent?
For the federal definition, it's eighty-seven versus eighty-two.
Okay, five percent, federal is?
And then for the state definition, it's ninety versus eighty-six percent.
So about four, five percent, four, five percent, let's use up for the time being, about five percent. How many students are we talking about, about seventeen hundred? Is that, is that per year?
Yeah, probably about, by the time they get to high school, it's probably more like about nine hundred to a thousand.
Nine hundred to a thousand, if it is a five percent, that's about fifty students, if we use a five percent rate. And if you're just using the assumption that it's a one-year delay, average cost is fourteen thousand, then it could be another several hundred thousand, is that?
It would definitely be that way of doing it, we'd have to get to the exact numbers, yes, we'd have to kind of work it out, but yes.
General sense of what further avoidance could be.
Yeah, if it was about fifty students, then it would be fifty times the eleven thousand that it costs for the extra year, yeah.
And then there would be further cost of avoidance on the part of reading intervention, which probably we are not able to quantify at this point.
Exactly.
Correct.
Okay, the next one is, our next question is, you know, we are, school system, we are generally known as K through twelve. And as we, as we continue investing, because we see the need, and we see the value and importance of providing more pre-K, you know, education to our youngsters, that we are going beyond the K through twelve. And I see the county as investment for our needs, I see the, about four million dollars. As we, as, you know, if you accept your recommendations to continue working on the, maybe, you know, reducing, decreasing on the waitlist, we'll obviously need, you know, help from the county side to address that. Is that fair to say? Of course.
Yes.
And the one, one, one last one is this, that, you know, larger percent of those students on FSEP, Elizabeth, are coming from, you know, families where the language is other than, well, in addition to English as you also spoke on. And we see, you know, high percentages of English learners as a part of the FSEP population. And I'm assuming that probably most of those And I'm assuming that probably most of those, you know, parents of the students are also maybe second language learners, English language learners as well. And many of them probably, if they are able to acquire their language skills, I'm talking about parents, you know, more quickly than otherwise, they would be able to help their children even better.
I think that's, I think that's a reasonable assumption. I don't know, Maura, if you have any details or facts about that, but that's generally the pattern, yes. Parents are better teachers of their children when they speak the language.
I knew that I was stating quite obvious, but I'm trying to say to my colleagues that that is why we also should not be neglecting on the needs of providing county, not just a school system, you know, public schools, but county as a whole, providing needs, providing in the programs that will meet the needs of this particular group of parents, whom we really need to see to be able to help their children better in terms of language acquisition.
Right. Maura, you had something to add there.
So the research for young children is similar to the ESAL population. We prefer good language models in their home language versus, so, versus speaking in English if they don't have a good, if their English isn't very good. So what's more important in terms of brain development is that they have good language models in, regardless of the language. And that, I think, is similar to what you've probably seen with the immersion programs, that it, kids actually end up doing better. And they, there's been some more recent studies when kids are learning two languages, their self-regulation is actually better. So what we really want to encourage, and what we do encourage for our families, is that they talk to their children in rich ways in their own home language, which they have a better grasp of, yes.
You know, I'm not disagreeing with you. I mean, importance of having home, you know, you know, communicating with their children in the home language. But at the same time, there is no way for us to be, for us to discount the value of, you know, parents understand English, to be able to tell children, guide their children better as they, you know, progress through our K through school, or now pre-K through our, through our school system.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. McLaughlin.
I just want to first echo what many of my colleagues have said, which is this is a very informative program evaluation report. Appreciate the hard work you all did. And Dr. Garza, I'm just really pleased with the information that's being provided to us. It's so timely considering tomorrow's retreat with the board supervisors. And in reflecting on what my colleagues have already asked, I want to focus on a couple things then. First, I think it cannot be understated. When you see higher high school graduation rates, that is absolutely essential. That is the goal that we have for all of our students at, at a bare minimum. So seeing that was one of the things that jumped off the page for me. And then certainly seeing the return on investment of less intervention services needed. I mean, those are all really concrete substantive ways to point to the value here. But a couple of things I want to better understand, because we're always looking about, looking at the challenges of finite resources. And so what occurred to me first was on page 45, where it was mentioned that Fairfax County uses a braided model versus Prince William use, does not use a braided model. And, and so I wondered if you could maybe speak a little bit to why, playing the devil's advocate, what is the benefit to Prince William to use an unbraided model compared to what we're doing?
I think the only evangel be tracking, right? I mean, it's easier.
It's how they track their funds.
It's a simpler model. It's very simple to keep up with things and categories.
So when you use the term braided specifically, then, because what I heard in, in the presentation was, the braided model is considered best practice. So maybe if you can reiterate then, what exactly are you gaining from the braided model?
Okay, so the braided model, because it has to satisfy all the different grants, it basically has to meet standards from multiple brands. So you have sort of the best of everything in every single classroom. It also means that the students, as they move into kindergarten, have had a uniform experience. So for example, if you're in Head Start and you get dental care, or you get the nutrition services in Head Start, maybe VPI doesn't offer that, and you would end up with students going into kindergarten who have had very different experiences.
Thank you. So that's, that is what my understanding was between braided and unbraided. To be honest, the first answer you guys gave me was, it's for, you know, tracking purposes. That's not actually, right, but, but that's actually not, I mean, from my sense, well, well, actually, I think there's another piece to it, and I think it goes to a principal decision on our part, which is that you could do the unbraided model, and what I heard you all say is you could do VPI, and you're not going to have all the other additional program requirements that Head Start has, which, as I understand, is a much richer requirement. So the advantage, or one of the rationale for Prince William could be, it's not, it's not as expensive if you're doing, here's our VPI classrooms, here's our Head Start classrooms. Because one of the things that many colleagues talked about in the Q and A was the fact that the state says, we're estimating, you know, $6 million, you're going to get three because, from us, because we fund you at 50%. And we're actually costing $13,000. So if hypothetically, we were doing the Prince William model, would it then cost less because you wouldn't have all 99 classrooms needing to fulfill the Head Start requirements? I am not advocating a Prince William model. I want everybody to understand that when we have this very important conversation about why it costs $13,000 in Fairfax County per child, it's because we are choosing to fulfill Head Start requirements plus VPI and, you know, all those things. And that, the higher standard means a higher cost.
Yes.
But I think it's important to note that Prince William County, they actually leave more slots on the table than we do with their current model.
Well, and, you know, to be fair, not to take time away from the work session, we all know, when you're the largest school system in Virginia, just sheer numbers-wise, we're going to have the, you know, per capita, per capita might not be the same, but sheer hard quantitative numbers, we're going to have more seats potentially on our waitlist because we're just that much bigger. So, but I, I really wanted us to be thinking about that, because especially if we're going to have the conversation with our board supervisors, and we have the conversation about our waitlist, and we have the conversation about facilities, you know, how many classrooms, you know, I appreciated the caveat being made, that we could wave our magic wand, get our 13 to 14 more classes, but that isn't what we actually can do, because we have to maintain some sort of a physical waitlist. So, you know, then, then what is our goal? And the point of all of my conversation here is especially because of tomorrow, and going back to my experience in working on a joint effort with the county when we were looking at synthetic turf fields, you have to have a plan. And that's my goal for tomorrow, is what's the shared plan with the supervisors and the, our school board? And we then have to start envisioning, all right, if we're shooting to get 10 more classrooms, because we kind of have to keep a waitlist of, I don't know, you guys, to tell us what that has to be. Do we need a waitlist size of about three to four classroom sizes? Then, but we need to target what it needs to be, then we need to figure out what it's going to cost, and then we need to figure out the, the funding plan over the next three to five years, whatever we think is reasonable for one of the wealthiest counties in the United States to be not where we need to be on Head Start. So again, I want to thank you very much for giving us the, I think, essential data points for tomorrow's conversation. I'm very excited that we are partnering with the University of Virginia. I think that is going to continue to help us have an informed conversation. But I, I guess my final question is, as I sort of spent this focal point on, okay, it costs us 13, and the state says it should cost you 6. And we talked about this cost of living here and all of that, Ms. Schultz brought up some good points. But do we know what Prince William's cost per pupil is in their preschool model is? Because I think that's something that, again, helping define, when Prince William does it this way, where they're not fulfilling all the requirements like Head Start, which is, it sounds like the highest standards, is it costing them less per pupil? Again, I'm not advocating that we go that route, but I think it helps to frame it out. Options, choices, which way are we going to go with this thing? Because maybe we end up saying, we, we feel strongly that going at the $13,000 model is essential, but we need to, I think, have the helpful conversation of, why does the state make its 50% of the cost?
And your, your team just reported to me that it's not in the report, but they, we can get it to the school board members, is that correct?
Yeah.
So we'll get that.
And, and maybe since you've broken it out that way, we can see what's the cost per student in their, when it's in their Head Start program versus their VPI program? You know, because I, I do think that would be very interesting, that if you're only having to fulfill in an unbraided model what VPI is requiring, that may be why the state has such a low standard. And then maybe we need to have, that'll help us with our state legislative package, a conversation of, hey, cost per pupil plus the fact that honestly, you know, your VPI model is insufficient, here's why. I think it helps when we are trying to lobby for more state funding too. And other than that, I guess I'll have to wait till tomorrow's conversation.
Ms. Darren Kofax?
Thank you all. I really do appreciate this information as well. It's quite comprehensive, and I, it, it's going to be something I continue to reference, your 172-page document. There's so much information in there, so thank you very much. Most of my questions were answered, but I guess I just kind of want to comment on what some of my colleagues have talked about. And, you know, I'll just start, since Ms. McLaughlin was the last one. I think, you know, I, I've said a thousand times, I sat on the Childcare Advisory Council for nine years, and we have been advocating for that funding for so long. Ms. Schultz, you nearly answered your own question. The reason they don't want to change the funding formula downstate is because it will mean less money for them and more money for us, and there's no political will to do that. We've been having that conversation for years and years and years, and it's, and it's really quite unfortunate. You know, the graduation rates that are, I, I think overall, you know, when you look at the findings, there's not a big wow, unfortunately. But when you look at the findings in my area and my region, I think there's no surprise that those with the highest concentration of students on the waitlist have the lowest graduation area in the county. They do. So there is a correlation, there is something. It's a wow factor, but it's the same thing we talk about. Pre-K is sexy to talk about, but in the short term. But who wants to wait 12 years to figure out how, when we invest that dollar? And there's not a lot of longitudinal studies, there's not a lot of, and I guess that might be one question. Do we have the want or the will to do that? Like the UVA, could it be a moment in time, could it, but could be longitudinal at some point? Is that something that we feel would be beneficial to us?
To my understanding, it is a longitudinal study.
It is, okay. For how long?
It follows children that are going to be in pre-K next year through second grade.
Through second.
And children that are in kindergarten next year through third grade.
Right. So it's, it is, but it's still for those, yes, it's still for those early elementary school years. And I guess, you know, mine is just, of course, it's, it's, it's that perennial question. We, I think, your, your group, Maura, you in particular with your county partners are doing so much to help address the gap, and we appreciate that, but it's that perennial question. What is, what do we do? It's a combination of things, and I think this is one thing that's very successful. Ms. Evans, I just wanted to speak to your, the Bridge to K program, that was instituted when I sat on the Childcare Advisory Council. And again, maybe, Ms. Burke, we need more, you know, real data, but the anecdotal data has been clear for years. Okay, so I think that, if we can get that, I think that will be very important, because that started out as a very small subgroup, and the results were so phenomenal as far as, you know, I guess it would be, what do we call it, executive functioning skills? That's the executive functioning, functioning skills of our youngest learners, and there has been, those three weeks have, have proved in that small cohort of schools to be quite beneficial. So I think, you know, maybe we need more hard data points on it to justify it. But I know when we initiated that program at the county, or they initiated the program, I sat on the board, there was a jealousy amongst us, like, you've got that program that's amazing. So, you know, we keep rolling it out, and I think, I think that's important. Mr. Moon, you talked about the need for the parents to speak English, and I, the name of the George Mason professor escapes me, Ms. Burke, maybe you could help me, the one who's the child, pre-K expert at George Mason.
Actually, what I said was learn English.
Learn, and, and yes.
So that they could help their children.
So they could help. That was precisely his point when I asked him. I happened to meet with him shortly after, and it's, you know, one person's opinion, but I, you know, do think he's well-respected in the early childhood education. I'll get, Mr. Ginsberg. Yes, yes, the dean, okay. I spoke to him, and that was precisely his point, and he made the analogy to me. I said, why, why is this survey showing a, a, a dearth of, you know, of help at the third grade and sometimes longer level? And he said, and he said to me, he said, when were you not able to help your kids in math anymore? And I go, mm, you know, eighth, ninth grade, you know? Because I, I, you know, unless we're math majors, many of us no longer remember the advanced math courses, so it's hard for us to teach. And he said, well, that, he felt, was a, at time when the work for the, for the newcomers to our country who didn't have the English skills necessary, those were the demarcation years where the, the, the English language spoken in, or the English language presented in the homework was more extensive than the parents were capable of. So that was one piece of evidence that he, as the dean, and his, you know, talking to others around the country was something. And then, Dr. Garza, I guess I have a question for you, based upon, you know, our, the, you know, the waitlist will be with us foreseeable future, and, and I do want to talk, I did just want to mention that I, I think it's very fair for us to talk to, to the county tomorrow specifically about their role and, and funding, because we have, as a school system, funded many more classrooms over the last four years than the county has, and I think that's extremely important. But, Dr. Garza, my more specific is, because this waitlist continues, and because we see it, there's a lot of, you know, the, the language issue, do you think it would, it would be beneficial for more intensive ESAL services to be looked at, kind of like we currently are looking at with our pilot programs in the high school level, to help those kids who do not, for whatever reason, get to experience that pre-K? Or do you feel, you know, you know, maybe we need to redo that crosswalk for the elementary school years like we just did for the high school?
I, I think the point's a good one. I think we do need to have to look at our elementary, particularly our early elementary programming for English, English language learners, to make sure that we're targeting. I think that was a real, in terms of the wow, I think, from this report, I think the cost avoidances that were supported by this research, both in special education and ELL programming, I think that, that in and of itself is certainly good learning. programming, I think that in and of itself is certainly good learning that we can take away and see what we can do about it. But I do have a question with regard to the cost, maybe if you don't mind my asking it now, since you brought it up. On page 43, Mrs. Darren Kofax's point, we're spending 9.6 million this year, is that correct? And the county's funding 3.9, is that correct? Just want to make sure that we're right on that, so if this gets brought up tomorrow. Okay, so essentially what I just said was correct. Okay, I wanted to make sure, to your point, Ms. Darren Kofax.
Absolutely, and it has been that way for several years. But, thank you all. I didn't mean to say your report wasn't a wow. We all wanted, we know what we want. We wanted to say it made these gains, and it was, and so that was, but your data is correlating with what we've been seeing, and thank you. I think you've done an excellent job and really appreciate this, and I think it's a conversation we're going to continue to have to have, but thank you.
I think one of the interesting pieces that might be important to follow in the future, and we alluded to it a little bit in our annual report, is that children that are now in fifth grade have been in our pre-K cohorts that have received our program with the pre-K POS. So there's alignment there from K to 12. So I think they are actually a really interesting cohort to begin to follow as they move through. So there's children that are current, were in fifth grade last year, would be in, and the grades below, will be interesting cohorts to follow, to see if we see different kind of outcomes for them with the adoption of the pre-K POS and that alignment.
Okay, good.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Great, thank you, and I echo all of my colleagues on the boards. Great appreciation for this report. It is very detailed. I appreciate especially, you're looking at it, you're cutting the data in a different way, especially from a return on investment. I would actually like to drill down on that a little bit more, because I think everybody else has raised some of the most important issues and concerns about the student impacts. And now I'd like to talk a little bit about funding sources and what we can do as a board going forward, because I do agree that we need to continue on our state legislative agenda to get additional funding. But I would challenge that it's not just a state issue, but a federal issue, and especially when you look at where the federal funding has been in areas of not only Title I, but Head Start and Impact Aid, because as you mentioned, a portion, one of the criteria for allocating slots for early Head Start, or for Head Start, is to military-connected youth, which is absolutely appropriate, but our funding hasn't necessarily kept up with our increased cost in this area. So I would appreciate it if we could have a trend analysis of where federal funds and state funds have grown over time to support these important initiatives. Additionally, I would urge my colleagues to look at not only the avoidable cost, which is, I think, which we're talking about on page 52, when Mrs. Schultz was questioning the numbers, it's really avoidable cost. But I would also look at opportunity cost long-term, and those are harder to quantify, because they, you know, how do you quantify whether the opportunity cost of a child taking advantage of advanced academics, except in a longer-term economic impact, which is beyond any longitudinal studies that we're doing? But there is an opportunity cost that does have a direct impact on our societal cost, and that is the opportunity cost of students not graduating on time. And when you say that it's a 4% to 5% graduation on-time improvement, then you're talking about a cost to the schools that if you have 50 kids that don't graduate, because we do have concentrations of these children, the 50 kids that don't graduate on time could have an impact of whether or not a school is fully accredited or accredited with warning, and then you impact the reputation of that school, and the impact of the reputation of the school goes further out into the impact on that community that surrounds the school. So I would make sure, I hope all of my colleagues understand what that impact is on our communities there. Additionally, just one last question, and this is really, you talk about the braided model, and I think that's an equity issue, that it's important to have the braided model, because if we break it out into different types of services just based on what the grant money is, and some kids get Grant A and others get Grant B, then there will be a difference in what we're delivering to each of those children. And along those lines, the pre-Head Start programs today, are they braided into this model? Because it's my understanding that pre-Head Start in the Mount Vernon district looks different than pre-Head Start elsewhere, just because of the model that's being used.
Are you referring to early Head Start?
Yes, early Head Start.
So the infant toddler program?
Yes, the three-year-olds that are taking advantage of that. It's different in our area.
So, early Head Start is six weeks to 2.6 months? So it's not, it doesn't include three-year-olds, except when they're already in the program, we let them finish the academic year before they, we move them. So they have a birthday, like, in April, we don't kick them out. They get to stay until they can move up into the three- and four-year-old program. So the difference is, is that the model in, route down on the Mount Vernon area, is that they are looking at family childcare programs? So they are looking at what's called, is now being called a mixed-delivery model? And that's similar to how the county currently does the four-year-old program in, when they are working with community programs. So that would be considered a mixed-delivery model as well, so that children are not just contained in a program with like kids. They might be in a family childcare with your child who's in that program as well. In our program, in the public schools for early Head Start, we have a center-based model, and there are six classrooms. There also exists the center-based model down in the Gum Springs program, as well as the Higher Horizon program in the Falls Church area. And Higher Horizon also has a home visiting model as well, where they go and work with families of infants and toddlers.
So those programs aren't braided, then? Those are hybrids that are addressing perhaps some of the shortage of funds or shortage of space?
I think that's a good question for the county staff tomorrow. I'm not quite clear about the family childcare model, if that is braided with CCAR funding, the childcare subsidy, that actually might be happening, but I'm not an expert on that, because that's a program that they are developing.
And additionally, the three-year-old waitlist only has 39 kids on it, and that, I understand, is because you think that's about the max, you're actually going to get off the waitlist. Is there a reason why we don't keep the waitlist as long as it gets, so that we can use that as data points of the unserved population?
So we could get to that date. So it's not that we do not maintain information on the families who apply and are eligible, what we do is we don't can finish the process for a lot of reasons. Some of that is the stewardship of our resources to process applications, takes time, when the reality is they will not be getting in, and it's also a little bit of a mixed message to families that the application would lead to something that is not possible for them. So what we do is we do maintain an Excel spreadsheet, so that when the new academic year comes, those are the families we immediately contact and say, you're, it looks like you will be eligible, let's finish that application process so that you can be in the program as a four-year-old. So we don't maintain the official waitlist, which means they are ready to go in the next day, but we do know...
It's waitlist light.
Right, it's, yeah, so there's the official waitlist, and then there's knowing where families live, and we can follow up and contact them.
So it would be very helpful when you provide the data to Mrs. Evans regarding the waitlist and where people are located, if you could include the numbers for the non-complete applications as well. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McAlveen.
Okay, real quickly, I agree with my colleagues that this was an excellent report, and it's an affirmation of many things that we knew, but also presented us with some new things. And I would also say that the heat maps are excellent. The more we can see of those kind of things, the better. I did want to make a remark, because some colleagues talk about the legislative program. This issue has been in our priorities document for the past four years, since we began the priorities as part of that program. It's currently ranked as our number two priority, next to funding, so I don't think we could give it any more strength than what we have already done. And then, just one question for you, Ms. Burke. We heard that Dr. Garza's wow factor was the cost avoidance issue. Did you have another thing that really stood out to you, having worked on this issue?
So I think that we can't look at this data with not truly understanding the children and families that we're working with. So seeing the small effect was very much a wow to me, because the children that we serve in our program are the neediest of the needy. We have more stringent criteria in terms of risk factors, and so the more risk factors, the more likely they are going to get into the program. So knowing that we are serving the neediest of the needy, and we're still seeing an effect size, is powerful to me. Even if we see that it diminishes over time, we are still seeing that kids are being successful in school. And again, the population that we are serving are at the highest risk. It's because of the criteria we use there, we use 85, 185% at or below the poverty level, which is lower than what we could be using, which is 200. We still, so we are really serving the neediest of all needy kids.
Thank you. Dr. Garza, you wanted a little more time. I guess we'll do that before we go to next steps, or do you want us to do that first? Okay, go ahead.
And I have one thing to share, too.
Mara, you put that so well. I'm glad, I'm glad that Mr. McAlveen asked you that question, because I thought that was a profound statement and important point, I think, to kind of close this on. A couple of things I just wanted to point out, that this is the fourth study, as was pointed out earlier, for new school board members. This is the first year that these kinds of extensive program evaluations have been presented to the board at work sessions. So I think it's been certainly value-added, all four of these reports. I know it's added time to work session schedules, but I think as evidenced by this conversation today, these are important conversations. So I think this is a good value add. We'll be visiting and talking about what the, maybe three or four topics for next year will be. This will be an annual kind of process, assuming the board wants us to continue with it. This was our first attempt at a type of return on investment kind of component to this valuation. I want to compliment the staff. I think they did a great job. Dr. Sakwa, you and your team did a wonderful job on this report, and I would encourage you to continue. I think, you know, that's hard to quantify in education. We did this, and this was the direct correlated outcome, very difficult to achieve. But I think it is important for us to talk about how much these programs are costing and how much the return on investment is. So again, I want to thank our team for a great job. I hope this was valuable to the board, and I think this will continue as we evaluate our pre-K, early childhood, and the UVA study coming forward, so, thank you. I just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you. Ms. Huff does have one comment.
Just Dr. Garza, she was talking about this continuing on. One point I think would be interesting continuing on, not necessarily that you'd have to go back this time around, but comparing, you compared two-year pre-K to one-year pre-K, and since there's sort of, we get to a point on both that we get to a no change, I would be curious if we would look at one year versus no and two-year versus no, because then I think it helps differentiate the actual impact of one, zero years, one year, two year, and then we have a good comparison all across the board.
Dr. Garza, I mean, I recognize two staff members who were very much involved in the development of the report. In the audience, Janine Lassina and Ashley Archer. Oh, I'm sorry, Chantal followed us there, too. Sorry, didn't see you, Chantal. They were very instrumental in the development of the report. Thanks.
And I do want to add, there was a note, if we could go to slide 43, where we talk about the costs, and we highlight the county's cost for preschool programs. You'll note that that $4 million does come to Fairfax County, but through my colleague, Kristin Michael, she pulled up the LOBS presentation from the Department of Family Services, and it looks like their expenditures, the county expenditures for Head Start are about $7 million, and that does not include this $4 million here. So that's only the county's Department of Family Services cost for Head Start through the county. That was in their LOBS presentation. So I wanted to clarify that before going into tomorrow's meeting.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to get back to Ms. Huff's, oh, just...
I think we need clarity on that. What was meant by that, Kristin, real quickly, again?
We just want to make sure, it's hard looking through the county's LOBS to tell exactly what they're spending in terms of preschool, but the conversation before, we just want to make sure that everyone recognizes that the county is spending money to run their own programs, in addition to transferring money to FCPS to run programs. So just so we're clear, they're spending money that they're giving to us, but they're also spending their own money on programs that they're running. No, they're not spending more than we are. We just didn't want to leave the impression that the county is not spending, yeah, that they're only spending this money. The county's spending the money that they're giving to us, as well as money that they're spending to operate their own programs through the Office for Children.
This is the total program cost for FCPS-run programs only.
Yeah, you'll need to use the mic, Karen.
So on the county's LOB, for people's future reference, it's LOB number 124, Head Start, and they just showed their net cost to the general fund, which is 7.1 million, but it's not clear if any of the funding they provide to us is or is not included in this total.
Okay. So Mara, some of the programs that you talked about earlier that are supplemental programs are included within the county's costs that are outside of this, probably? Yeah, I guess the answer to that question, okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, because the county runs Head Start classrooms separate from us, and then there are obviously many other services for families and public health and all the rest of that, you know? Right, right, that are different than that. I want to get back, Ms. Huff, you had asked a different research question, and I think we, I don't want to just leave that one in the air as to whether or not...
I don't think it's a different, I think the data already exists, because they've done those different data points for those three different points, so it's not an additional research question. It's more of a presentation of that information.
So my question is, is that, is that a question that can be easily answered, or does this...
We have data, but we would have to run the analyses to make sure that the groups line up to make a valid comparison of where you're describing.
Is that an easy, a medium, or a hard thing to do before we ask staff to do it?
Medium.
Medium.
Right in the middle.
Like I said, I mean, we are not being asked to do anything with this right now, I'm not asking for them to go back in the future, I said going forward.
Okay, thank you, okay, thank you, I just want to leave that one. All right, so going forward, that would be something of interest as we continue to track this. Okay, before we go to next steps, I would just echo, this was a very, very helpful report, very carefully done, really appreciated the, the statistical analysis that was done with such care, so that we understand what it means, what it doesn't mean, so that it becomes very, very useful. So, thank you, high-quality work, thank you very much. We look at next steps, so that at least we kind of understand where we are. Okay, so if people take a look at this, provide data on a number of children on waitlist, a number of non-complete applications, families who apply and are not eligible. Ms. Evans?
That's the, by location.
By, by school or pyramid, is that something that can be done?
I think what the, the heat maps are showing, by location of program, right? So I, I guess I would be interested in seeing.
It's by pyramid, I believe.
We have it by site more, you may have it more detailed than that.
But I think by site would actually be more detailed than by pyramid, right?
The waitlist is per, so we have the sixty-five FISIP sites, and it's the waitlist at each of those sixty-five FISIP sites.
So I, that would.
You mean by site, then?
Yeah, okay.
By site, all right, so then it will be.
Well, you could ask for both, you know, by, by school and by site, if, I mean.
How about by site? How about if we do it by what they've got? Is that the easiest way to answer that?
Because that's how, that's how you keep the data? You keep it by site?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, and families who apply and are not eligible, is that, is that a difficult ask? Is that an important ask, or can we?
We have total numbers on that, Mara, do you keep that by site as well, or?
We, we can give you total numbers in the school division.
So if we can, if you can share what you have, I'm, I, I think we need to be cautious as to assign another completely. Okay, is this under? Okay, so is that doable, in other words, that's information you have? Yes, okay. All right, the next one, coordinate with board chair to schedule UVA group to address board about upcoming study, I think there was consensus on that. Provide the per-people cost in Prince William, include Head Start versus VPI if possible, so that is an if possible. Ms. McLaughlin?
Actually, I apologize, it's for the UVA one, I just wanted to see if there might be a little bit of clarity.
Wait, 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 provide the per-people cost, you mean have UVA do that?
No, 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 I said you start on the next bullet, and I was trying to get your attention on the bullet we just covered on.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, all right, go ahead.
Coordinate with board chair to schedule UVA group to address the board, do we want, I mean, I think that's a, we need to be a little more clear on the timing of it, do we want them to come mid-study, because they're about to start in the fall, so.
They, they had, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
They would request it to come before, sometime in the summer, before they get started, and then sometime around mid, mid-study in each year.
Oh, so they actually want to come see us before, okay.
Okay.
Then we'll, we'll just have to think about the timing, since we go into August recess.
Right, okay, so that's still, okay. And then provide the per-people cost in Prince William, include Head Start versus VPI if possible. Again, Ms. McLaughlin, you want that? Okay, and is that possible, staff? Yes, okay. Provide trend analysis of growth over time in federal funds and state funds to support these initiatives. Is that possible? It probably is.
The, the question was related to, are we, you know, just federal funding, state funding over time, is it going up or down? I think was the, the request.
Okay.
For, for what kind of, what kind of initiatives?
It was just state and federal funding for early childhood.
Early childhood.
Early childhood for Head Start, I would presume, yes?
Well, it's Head Start.
Okay, all right, is that doable? Okay.
Federal funds for during the state for VPI plus, but, but we can look at it in conjunction.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure that it's knowable, we're not asking for something unusual, okay?
We haven't had opportunities.
Okay, and the last, provide data on one-year versus none, and two-year versus.
I would take that one off, we just had that conversation, I don't believe Ms. Huff expected it to be a next step.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Just something for us to think out about in the future.
All right, Mrs. Strauss?
Mrs. Strauss? I, I did have two others. One was asking for the amount of funding for Bridge to K program.
The amount of funding for Bridge to K, all right.
That's a simple one.
It's a simple one.
The other one, which is a little bit more complex, and maybe we need to, well, the other that I considered a next step was considering how we might consider the need for English-language services to be a, a risk fast factor on our waitlist.
What would you do?
Because, I guess, I don't know, I don't know how that's a next step.
That would be a conversation.
Come, yeah, and that may be a school board discussion, I don't.
Ask to happen for something like that, too.
Okay, so you will, all right?
Is there any way to memorialize it in the next steps, though, that we, I mean, I.
Research need for, oh, okay.
Research need for English-language services to be a risk factor on our waitlist.
That's great, thank you.
Is that okay?
Okay.
Mrs. Strauss, the, the third from the bottom bullet about trends?
Right.
Is that analysis of growth in funding to Fairfax County Public Schools?
Yes.
Yes, I would assume that that would be meaningful.
Not just in general.
Yes, not just in, not federal, it would be in growth to Fairfax County.
No money. I think, I think it was just looking at the trends, are we going up in, in monies that we're getting from the state federal government, or going down? I think that was the question.
Okay, Ms. Corbett Sanders, one last, and then we.
I'm sorry, the one that says research need for English-language services to be a risk factor, it's, it shouldn't be research the need, it's research the potential for English-language services to be a risk factor.
Okay, all right, I think that's clear. I'm sorry, could I ask about the second bullet? It just says during summer, but I think we want it maybe and beyond.
That's, that's a little bit too limiting, we may not be able to do it till first of September.
Sure, I would just, yeah, I think that the idea is.
And then, Ms. Strauss, I had one final one that I had written down, I think that the number of board members had to ask for more specific, and maybe some other Bridge to K study results.
Okay, all right.
That we had, I believe Mara said that she has it, we could provide it.
Amount of funding for Bridge to K and.
And some other research that we had with regard to its impact.
And impact, okay, and other research available regarding its impact, okay? Is that it? I think we've got it, all right? Great, thank you all very much, this really was a wonderful report. And before we go in, I think we have to go into closed session, so board members don't move. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to, one, discuss the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or, or offerers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position, negotiating strategy of the public body, and, two, discuss employees pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one A one.
Discuss and consider.
Oh, discuss and consider the assignment, appointment, performance, or resignation of specific employees pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one A one, and is there a motion? So moved by Mrs. Schultz, seconded by Ms. Hines, all those in favor, we are in closed session, thank you.
Can we try to be back out here by two fifteen, because we're now about.
We're very, very far behind, yeah.
Yes, thank you.